Recording in progress. Good afternoon and welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission forty-seventh meeting. Commissioners, I believe we have some minutes to approve.
Yes Chair, motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the thirty-fourth and thirty-sixth meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the thirty-fourth and the thirty-sixth meetings as previously circulated. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, motion is carried. Going into the request portion, calling agenda item number one, request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-five-eight from Aloha Pronto Waikiki LLC. Mr. Shin Sato.
Hello, good afternoon Chair and Commissioners Ross Shin Sato, authorized agent for Aloha Pronto Waikiki LLC. Also should be present is Yusuke Ishikawa, member. I think.
And this is a reduction of the license area, on Mr. Shin Sato.
Yes, the approval for expansion of premises was given on April fifteenth, and this area that we want to delete is a entry to the lobby area. We found out that the doors were not going to be constructed. We spoke with the Liquor Commission licensing staff and they recommended we cut off the boundary before the elevator lobby.
Very good, thank you Mr. Shin Sato.
Motion to approve, request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-five-eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-five-eight. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, request is approved, thank you Mr. Shin Sato.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number two, request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-nine-one from Puka Panty LLC, Mr. Chung, are you there?
I'm here, but apparently my video is not working and I'm not quite sure why.
We can hear you, Mr. Chung, if you still want to proceed.
Yes, I want to proceed. Members of the Commission, Madam Chairman Matthew Chung on behalf of the licensee and the applicant for the motion for reconsideration. At the outset, this is not a motion to rehash the testimony either for or against the application. It is rather a motion that challenges the findings and conclusions and the procedure in adopting the findings and conclusions and whether either rules of the Commission were violated concerning testimony that was admitted in, and then whether in fact that testimony cited in the findings actually existed. So, you know, real briefly, the letters of protest that were submitted prior to the preliminary hearing were all submitted, I believe, less than one or two days prior to the hearing, which is a violation of the rule that requires three days' notice or submission before the hearing. And in the case of, in my case, I did not receive that testimony till the day of the hearing. Second, there was a finding about the Chinatown Neighborhood Board contained in the findings and conclusion, well, the Chinatown Neighborhood Board submitted nothing concerning the application. So that finding that cites to the Chinatown Neighborhood Board, I believe at paragraph eleven in my declaration, is unsupported because again, nothing was submitted by the Chinatown Neighborhood Board. Next, the investigative report had a finding at the end of the report that indicated the applicant met the statutory requirements for the license application. That also was not contained in the findings, even though it is in the investigative report at the location cited in my declaration. I also have a copy of that investigative report attached to the motion. Fourth, the statutes under chapter two-eighty-six, I believe, requires that the investigative report make a finding on whether or not the applicant is a fit and proper person to hold that license. Nowhere in the investigative report is that finding submitted or made. So that's a defect in the investigative report, even though the report says we are a, we've met the statutory requirement. So unless the Commissioners feel that meeting the statutory requirements is a determination that the applicant is fit and proper, then the specific finding of being a, about being a fit and proper person is not in the report, and so the report should be done again before the application is considered. Lastly, the findings make a conclusion that the applicant is not fit and proper to hold the particular license we're applying for, but nowhere does the findings and conclusions cite to any facts in the record or in the order on which it makes the conclusion that the applicant is not fit and proper. So for those five reasons, we would ask that the Commission grant the rehearing and set another preliminary hearing down the road so that these defects can be corrected, and even if the Commission later decides to deny the application based on whatever record has been created, hopefully that finding and conclusion will then be based on matters that met the statutory requirements that are contained in the investigative report or the record, and we have legitimate findings and conclusions. But what I'm saying is, the particular findings and conclusions that presently is before the Commission does not meet the statutory requirements, it should be then stricken, and we should have another opportunity at a preliminary hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chung, your comments are noted and the Commission is in receipt of your declaration as well as all of your supporting attachments. As you know, the request before us is just to, we will determine whether we'll be granting a rehearing. Other than what you've already said in your declaration outlined in a twenty points, do you have anything additional for us to consider prior to us going into executive session?
I do have another comment, and if I may, and thank you for asking. I understand there have, there have been a number of letters, both in support and in protest, that have been submitted for this reconsideration hearing. I do not believe it's proper for the Commission to consider those letters of protest, as that goes to the merits of the findings which have already happened and are before the Commission in the findings and conclusions. So I would ask the members of the Commission to disregard the letters of protest and in support that were submitted over the past week, and if the Commission grants a, grants this rehearing and sets another preliminary hearing down the road, then certainly those letters of protest and support can be considered then. But at this point, I would argue that really all I'm challenging is the substance and the support for the findings and conclusions that are already entered, and I would ask the Commission to disregard those matters that came in this week prior to the hearing, and if, again, if, if the Commission decides to grant the rehearing, then those letters of protest and support can be considered later.
Okay, duly noted. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Chung? Can I get a motion?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
It's been moved in second to, to go into executive session. Any objection? Any, any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, we are now in executive session. Back on the record, I will recall the matter, recalling agenda item number two, request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-nine-one from Puka Panty LLC. Mr. Chung, you still there?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to deny request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-nine-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to deny request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-nine-one. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, motion is carried, request is denied. Thank you, Mr. Chung.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number three, request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-nine-six from Bob's Sports Bar. Hello.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Rollo Cravelo, I represent Bob's Sports Bar.
And Mr. Cravelo, you're requesting approval to renew two thousand, after the two thousand twenty deadline?
Yeah.
You want to, you have any comments or?
Well, basically Commissioners, everything that happened in that period of time, everything was so up in the air, you know, I had entertained some other options as far as what I could do with the space at that time, and you know, we're looking at all sorts of things, car washes, something that would sustain, you know, during these times, and you know, I looked at a lot of different options, although, nothing seemed to come of it, and now that things are opening up again, I reached out and obtained the resources I need to reopen and do whatever I need to do, so I thought it'd probably be a good move right now to request being able to renew my license and open up again. Under unprecedented circumstances, it took everybody like it did, you know, it just took away our revenue stream like it did, and put everybody in such a dire predicament, just trying to maintain our leases and maintain, you know, Jesus Hawaiian Electric, while I'm charging me almost fifteen thousand dollars for that time and add all the power off.
I know that we're going on unprecedented times and we, a lot of businesses are starting to be creative.
That's all you got to do, you got to think of alternative revenue streams that you can use within the facility. Merchandising, you know, T-shirts and stuff, more so than ever before, but, you know, we're looking at things, you know, I'm trying to think of a way that I can utilize the facility because now we're, you know, we're limited to twelve o'clock where, you know, to be perfectly honest, my business, it is the best business between ten and two. It seems as though my business was the place where all the restaurant people came after they closed at ten, so it worked for me. Unfortunately, the fact that we're limited to, you know, twelve o'clock now, will take away a two-hour period that I could be earning, so I'm thinking that maybe I have to try and bring in coffee in the morning or something, something that's going to, you know, create revenue and maybe some money with food, or something to make up the difference, until, until everything goes back to normal, or hopefully if it ever does, who knows?
I appreciate your testimony today.
So your, your license was placed in safekeeping last year, I mean for this physical?
What it was, was, all the way up to the time, I was trying to figure out a way to, you know, think of what I could do. Unfortunately, because we couldn't get tax clearances and everything was just in such disarray, it seemed like it was just, and to be perfectly honest, at that time, my resources were dwindling really thin. I was trying to figure out how I could keep the, my space in play without getting into trouble with my landlords and stuff, you know? So I had to make some choices as far as what I could pay or couldn't pay right now and try and, and keep the entity alive somehow.
Are you able to get all your tax clearance?
Yes, I, 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 yes, I've, I've got everything submitted in and my CPA is finishing it all up now, as far as getting the clearance, and I got my certificate of good standing and everything else in mind.
Thank you.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
It's been moved in second to convene into executive session. Any objections? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, we are now in executive session. We are back from executive session, I will recall the matter, calling agenda item number three, request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-nine-six from Bob's Sports Bar.
Thank you Chair, motion to approve request number two-one-dash-two-three-two-nine-six, requiring that the licensee will pay all license fees, or all fees that are still owed to the Commission prior to picking up the license.
Yeah. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the requests with the verbiage provided in Vice Chairman's motion. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, motion is carried, request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Cravelo.
Thank you Commissioners.
Okay. Moving on, calling agenda item number four, request number two-one-dash-two-three-three-zero-zero from Halekulani Corporation, Ms. Otani.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, due to a conflict, I have to recuse on this agenda item.
Okay, let the record reflect that Vice Chair Lee is recused from agenda item four. Ms. Otani, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson, members of the Commission, and Ms. Sarai. Halekulani is requesting, this is Caroline Otani, attorney for Halekulani Corporation.
And Ms. Otani, your request is to continue to store liquor and wine inventory at the same offsite locations till October first?
That was my initial request, but my client has just requested that, we request that if we continue to October thirty-first instead, to give them a little extra time to move the inventory out, so one extra month.
Okay. Motion to approve request number two-one-dash-two-three-three-zero-zero from Halekulani Corporation until October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-one-dash-two-three-three-zero-zero. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, motion is carried, request is approved, Ms. Otani, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we get Commissioner Lee back, please? Okay, calling agenda item number five, request number two-one-dash-two-three-three-one-seven from Liliha Bakery, Mr. Luke, are you there?
Yep, yes, may the record effect, Wayne Luke has called for Liliha Bakery.
Thank you, Mr. Luke.
Motion to approve request number two-one-dash-two-three-three-one-seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-one-dash-two-three-three-one-seven. Any objections? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, request has been approved, thank you, Mr. Luke.
Thank you.
Chair, motion for the adoption, adoption of decision in order for agenda items six through sixteen inclusive.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve adoption of decision in order for agenda items six through sixteen. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, the adoption of decision in order is approved. Okay, going into adjudication hearing, Ms. Neely, are you there?
Good afternoon Commissioners, Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel appearing for as Liquor Commish, Liquor Prosecutor for tonight's adjudication hearings.
Okay, thank you. Calling agenda item number seventeen, Ohana Karaoke Two and Barbecue. Anybody appearing for agenda item number seventeen, Ohana Karaoke?
Hello? Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry, this is Keith Inagaki, President of Ohana Karaoke Two Grill and Barbecue.
Keith, can you spell your last name, please?
It's I-N-A-G-A-K-I.
Thank you.
The charges honored during the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to meet the requirement that at least thirty percent of its gross revenue come from the sale of foods in violation of Rule three eighty-two thirty-eight point twenty-two of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Inagaki, how do you wish to plead?
I plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number seventeen. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, motion is carried.
Ms. Neely, what is your recommendation?
Because this is a second violation of failure to meet thirty percent of gross revenue for food requirement, and licensee has had multiple audits and showing that their food sales hasn't, haven't met the requirement, I recommend that licensee be reclassified from a restaurant class license to a dispenser class license via Rule three eighty-two very one point two V, which gives the, which gives the Commission authority to reclassify a licensee who cannot meet its license requirements.
Okay, so you're just asking, or recommending a reclassification as opposed to any monetary fine?
Correct.
And when was the first violation?
Last violation was June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Inagaki, any comments?
No comments, Commissioner, just that we are trying our best to meet the requirement, we struggled in nineteen, and due to COVID it was even harder.
Okay, motion to convene into executive session?
Second.
It's been moved in second to convene into executive session. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, we are now in executive session. Okay, we are back on the record, I will recall the matter, calling agenda item number seventeen, Ohana Karaoke number two, Mr. Inagaki, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Okay, my motion is going to be to approve the recommendation of the prosecutor to reclassify the licensee to dispenser class license.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve agenda, I'm sorry, to, with the recommendations as outlined by Commissioner Mia Shiro. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, the, the reclassification is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neely, you there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Calling agenda item number eighteen, TA Station, Mr. Kiu Chi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiu Chi for the licensee, we waive reading of the charge and are plea of no contest.
Thank you, motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, what is your recommendation?
This is a first violation of a failure to comply with applicable laws, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Okay, can you provide the factual basis of the charge, please?
Sure, this is a violation of emergency order two thousand twenty-one dash zero four. On April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, investigators observed people inside the premises not wearing masks, not social distancing, and also they found that they were missing or incomplete contact tracing orders.
Thank you, Mr. Kiu Chi?
That's correct, the contract tracing information, it's something to be desired, it was obtained but was not complete, that has been revending based upon my conversation with the owner. The other problem we had is that the tables were not six feet apart from each other, it's a small premises, but that doesn't provide an excuse, and I've also talked to my client about that.
Okay, thank you for advising your client going forward. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item eighteen?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item eighteen. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, the penalty of five hundred dollars is imposed. Thank you, Mr. Kiu Chi.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nineteen, Punch Out Incorporated DBA eight fifty Leeward Bowl.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Honolulu Liquor Commission, Ms. Sarai, James HQ Lee, representing Punch Out Inc., DBA eight fifty Leeward Bowl. We waive reading of the charge and would like to enter a plea of no contest.
Thank you, motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This is a first violation of a failure to comply with applicable laws, specifically emergency order two thousand twenty-one dash zero four, investigator, liquor investigators observed over sixty people standing and interviewing, singing and dancing without face coverings. On one side of the premises, they also observed employees not wearing masks and hugging customers. On the other side of the premises, where they saw about thirty plus people.
And I'm not sure if I heard, is there a?
So I recommend a five hundred dollars.
Five hundred? I'm sorry, five hundred dollars?
That's correct, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, sorry, we're having a little difficulty hearing you.
Okay, let me try.
Mr. Lee, any comments?
Yes, we, we agreed to the fine, and my client apologizes for the problems, and he'll, he'll make sure it'll never happen again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, the penalty of five hundred dollars is imposed. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too. Calling agenda item number twenty, Club Bonita.
Licensee has requested a continuance of, for this matter, to July first, two thousand twenty-one, I have no objection.
Thank you, motion to continue agenda item twenty to July first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty to July first, two thousand twenty-one. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes, I, agenda item twenty is continued to July first. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, Club Bonita.
The licensee for this matter has requested a continuance to July first, two thousand twenty-one, I have no objection.
Thank you, motion to continue agenda item twenty-one to July first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item twenty-one to July first. Any objection? Any with reservation, seeing none Chair votes? Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. Agenda item twenty-one is continued to July first. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Club Vegas Star.
This licensee has requested a continuance to June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. I have no objection.
Ju, I'm sorry, June twenty-four?
That's correct, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
And just out of curiosity, what is the reason for the continuance? I'm noting at least two prior continuances of this matter.
So, I believe the first, well, for this continuation, I believe the manager wants to give an explanation, but she's sick this week. She did appear for a previous hearing, but I think it was a quarantine issue.
That's fine. Thank you for the explanation. Motion to continue agenda item twenty-two to June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Second?
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item twenty-two to June twenty-fourth. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. Agenda item twenty-two is continued. Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Club Vegas Star.
Licensee has requested a continuance to June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-three to June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve, to continue agenda item twenty-three to June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. Motion is carried. Agenda item twenty-three is continued. Calling agenda item twenty-four, Maui Tacos.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neo Gotah, appearing on behalf of Maui Tacos. Appearing with me is the owner, Mason Cummings. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Thank you. Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-four. Second?
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-four. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The no contest plea is approved.
Ms. Neely?
This is the first violation of unapproved alterations. I request, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Gotah.
Yes, this was a violation that occurred during the tenure of a prior licensee. However, since this was a transfer application, the current licensee is responsible for it. We have no explanation, or the current licensee has no explanation of why it occurred, but is aware of the rule that he is to obtain liquor commission approval prior to any renovations to his premise.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gotah. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-four. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The penalty of five hundred dollars is imposed for agenda item twenty-four. Thank you, Mr. Gotah.
Thank you.
Oh, one more. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, Maui Tacos.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neo Gotah, appearing on behalf of Maui Tacos. Appearing with me is the owner, Mason Cummings. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-five. Second?
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-five. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The no contest plea is approved.
Ms. Neely?
It's the first violation of failure to comply with applicable laws, specifically emergency order two thousand twenty-one dash zero four. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars. In this case, the licensee did not have a contact tracing log on the date of inspection. He was not able to produce any contact tracing logs since February.
Thank you, Mr. Gotah.
Yes, this was a complete breakdown in procedure. Immediately after this violation, Mr. Cummings rectified the situation. Employees were retrained and additional policies were put in place so that this does not happen again. Licensee did have contact tracing logs after February. It's just when the investigator had contacted Mr. Cummings that night, the only logs that he had at his residence to produce were back from February, but other logs, you know, were available.
Okay, and I trust going forward, there's going to be compliance with the contact tracing rules?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-five. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-five. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The penalty of five hundred dollars is imposed. Thank you, Mr. Gotah.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-six, Kailu Beers. Anyone appearing for Kailu Beers? Ms. Neely?
I did contact Jin Sun Oak a couple times. He indicated that he would appear remotely, that he was going to plead no contest. Since he hasn't appeared, we'll request a default judgment, a default.
You, I'm sorry, who is the person you're in contact with?
Jin Sun Oak, who represented, he was the agent of the licensee, the authorized agent.
Do we have any records if she's the owner or manager of the premises?
He is the husband of the owner, of the partner, or a member of the premises. He says she doesn't speak English very well, so he represented that he was not authorized agent.
Okay, in addition to your communications, can you let us know how service was affected?
Service, he received a copy of the hearing, a notice of hearing on May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. The cashier signed for it.
Motion for default judgment for agenda item twenty-six. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve a default judgment for agenda item twenty-six. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The default judgment has been approved.
And what's your recommendation for a penalty, Ms. Neely?
This was a first violation of a excuse me, failure to notify the commission within thirty days of a change in member. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-six. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-six. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The penalty of five hundred dollars is imposed. Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, Kailu Beers.
Again, I contacted licensee and he indicated he would appear. He was served with the complaint on May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Since he hasn't appeared, I'd like to move for a default judgment.
Thank you. In your communication, did the licensee's representative indicate how he wished to plead?
No contest.
Okay. Motion for default judgment for agenda item twenty-seven. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve a default judgment for agenda item twenty-seven. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The default judgment is approved.
What is your recommendation, Ms. Neely?
This was a first violation of failure to conspicuously post the current license. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-seven. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-seven. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The penalty of five hundred dollars is imposed. Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, Kailu Beers.
Again, I contacted licensee a couple times. I spoke with him a couple times this week. He indicated he would appear remotely. He was served with the notice of hearing, or licensee was served with the notice of hearing on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, when I spoke to licensee, or when I spoke with Jin Sun Oak, who said he was the authorized agent of the licensee. He indicated that he will plead no contest to this charge, as such, I request a default judgment.
Motion to approve the default, I'm sorry, motion for default judgment as to agenda item twenty. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the default judgment for agenda item twenty-eight. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The default judgment is approved.
What is your recommendation?
This was a first violation of failure to provide records for inspection. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-eight. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-eight. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The penalty of five hundred dollars is imposed for agenda item twenty-eight. Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, Saigon Passion Three, Mr. Kyuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. As to both items under agenda, under item number twenty-nine, we waive reading of the charge and enter plea of no contest.
Thank you. Motion to motion to accept.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
For agenda items one and two?
Yes.
Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the no contest plea for charges one and two in agenda item twenty-nine. Any objection? Any with reservation? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation for charge one, please?
Charge one is the second violation, handling violation. So, the previous violation occurred on June twenty-five, two thousand fifteen. I recommend a fine of two thousand dollars.
And what is the factual basis of the charge?
A male was observed harassing employees' exposed products while she was doing lap dances.
Okay, and what is your recommendation for charge number two?
Charge number two is lap dancing violation. It's the first violation. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
How much?
Five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Kyuchi?
Yes, I continued this matter to this date because I needed to talk to Mr. Lee's manager, Anthony Tran. Mr. Lee not present in the club that night. Anthony Tran was, and he was the one that got the violation. Mr. Tran was on the mainland, but he talked to me last week and he said that he did not see what occurred with the dancer. He did get the violation, got the citation. He talked to the dancer after that. The dancer was terminated shortly after the incident. Mr. Lee was not too happy because, as you can see, it's almost four years between the violations and he takes violations like this very seriously. He apologizes to the commission for the violation. Mr. Tran simply did not see the dancer engage in the conduct we did, but we don't question what the investigator saw.
Okay. I'll just admonish your client through you, Mr. Kyuchi, if you can relay that if a third violation occurs, we're going to treat this very differently. I know there's a four-year time lapse between the first and the second violation, but like you, we do treat these violations very seriously.
And Commissioner, I, Mr. Lee does too. That's why he wasn't too pleased about this. As you know, he, because of a redevelopment, he shut down at the end of two thousand nineteen. He does plan to reopen, and that's also why he wants me to assure the commission that he does take the violation seriously and if he's able to reopen in the future, that he will monitor the conduct of his dancers a lot better.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Seeing none. Motion to approve the recommended fines of two thousand dollars for charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two for agenda item twenty-nine. Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars for charge one, five hundred dollars for charge two, for a total of two thousand five hundred dollars. Penalty is imposed for agenda item twenty-nine. Any, I'm sorry, any objection? Any with, any reservation? Chair votes aye, the penalty of two thousand five hundred dollars is imposed. Thank you, Mr. Kyuchi.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty, Liquor Administrator.
Nothing from me. Have a great weekend. Good job, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neely.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.